All right.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Town of McCandless Meeting of Town Council for September 14th, 2020. The invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Clunin.
Thank you. Heavenly Creator, we thank you for the talents of our town staff, volunteers, and elected officials that allow us to come together to discuss town business remotely during this unusual time. We ask your guidance for continued good judgment in all matters that impact the residents of our town. We are also thankful for the hard work of our teachers, school employees, volunteers, and parents especially, that have allowed our students the ability to begin the school year this year, and we hope for continued patience from all. Thank you. Now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, announcements for this evening. We are in the midst of the Knit Hope Collection for the handmade, knitted, and crocheted scarves and hats that are being collected down at the Town Hall in the vestibule. That is through October 1st. Thank you, community, for your generosity. There are a lot of items coming in. It's really going to be very successful. I'm looking forward to hear those totals at the end. Also, we are accepting applications for all committees, boards, and authorities now. So look on the town website for what is open. So if you have an interest in getting involved with any of those, please put in your application. We also had our opening of our fitness court on Saturday, so that was very exciting. So now you can go down there, and there was even a short demo on how to use the equipment, so that is open and free to the public. We are also looking for fitness instructors who are interested in volunteering a class once a week next summer. I'd like us to try to manage weekly, maybe one class a week that's free to the public, to come in and have a trained fitness instructor there to kind of help you do the right thing, and those movements in a way that you don't regret the next day. All right, I think that's all the announcements that we have. I would like to introduce our junior council member. Raj, are you here?
He's on air. I just got to find him.
Hi. This is his first official meeting, so we'd like to welcome you. Raj is a sophomore at NA. He likes to play tennis, and I love this. His favorite sport is science, and he likes working out and watching television. So we are looking forward to your first report at the next meeting on a topic that interests you, which is under discussion with the Town Council. So welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you. I'm not aware of any seminars and conferences right now. So number five, is there someone who would like to make a motion about the minutes?
Shelley, good job. I move to approve the, well, I'll start with the first one, the Meeting of the Town Council Minutes, August 10th, 2020.
Okay, we've been doing them all together, but is there anyone?
That's what I didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is there anyone that needs to make any adjustments to the minutes, or anything that you want to change?
Madam President, I had one clarification. It's not technically a correction. On page three of the meeting minutes for August 10th, it says, "Councilmember Smith reported he does not know of any past water issues along Fassinger Lane." That is correct. That is what I said. Since then, I haven't been informed that there was one problem about eight years ago due to a plugged storm drain. And that's the only one that anyone that I have talked to remembers. But just to clarify that, the minutes are correct as they are, but I just wanted to correct that fact.
That now you are updated.
Right. Now I am updated, and I am aware of one issue.
Were there any other changes that needed to be made? Okay, all right then. Councilman Responds, would you like to make a motion for all the, at once?
I will. I will. I'd like to move to approve the minutes from the Meeting of Town Council of August 10th, 2020, the Reg and Beam Meeting of Town Council on August 24th, 2020, and the Meeting of Town Council Minutes from August 24th, 2020.
All right. Can I have a second? Angela, a second? All right. Any questions or comments at this point? Okay, double checking. All right. All those in favor accepting the minutes as submitted, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes are accepted. Number six is public comment on agenda items and general comments. If you have a comment that goes with the public hearing, which is on household pets, please hold those, and those will all be part of the public hearing, which is the next item. So anyone that has a public comment on something on the agenda, or something else that's not on the agenda other than pets, this is your time. So if you've not put your name, address, and the subject of your comment, and do that now, and RJ is going to start and unmute those people, one at a time.
Yes. So I've got two currently signed up for the Fassinger Farms development. Again, if anyone still wants to sign up, feel free to put it in the chat box. In the meantime, as soon, we've got quite a few people on here, so I got to find the camera box for our commenters here. So the first one up, I've got Dennis. Is it Mole?
Yes, Mole. Yes, like shopping mall. Yes.
I'm getting a thousand on these last things here.
So background, I'm the president of the Brook Park Manor Civic Association, which has about 350 homes, and basically surrounds the whole Fassinger Farms project on three sides. So, you know, as the representative of the community, I didn't have a specific change or request, but I did just want to sort of express the community's priorities for that project, which in order are basically safety, particularly around pedestrian safety with all the children that walk through that corner to get down to the pool area, stormwater management, because there is a lot of water on that hill on both sides. As Councilman Smith mentioned, there was a water issue eight years ago that I was involved in helping to remediate. That was on the other side of Fassinger. That was on the pool side, the southern side. So that was not on the side where the development is going. And then the setex, of course, because that corner of Fassinger and Broad Meadow, where it becomes Broad Lawn, is highly visible. It's one of the two major entrances into the neighborhood, a lot of traffic through there. I understand there have been some changes since the last meeting, which I did watch the video of. Thanks for making those available. That was very helpful. So I am looking forward to seeing how those issues have been addressed by the changes. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Next one, RJ?
We have got Colleen Paulson. Colleen, I'm going to send you a video and camera request. There you are.
Yep. Thank you. So Dennis put our concerns really well, and it's not even necessarily concerns. So I've lived in Brook Park for 16 years, and I have four kids. The reason we moved here was it's a sidewalk community. And so I don't know if you have been in Brook Park, but basically, our community is all sidewalks, and our kids, all four of my kids are out tonight walking the neighborhood while it's still remotely light. And so we really, you know, that really is what our community is based on. Our kids are out all the time. They're very active. And we have a pool at the bottom of the hill at the Fassinger in Rochester. And so where this development is going, you would go up Fassinger Lane, and now we have a farm. And so my kids call that the landmark, right? That's where all the kids in the community meet. And so where this development is being placed right now is a farm that basically, you know, the kids have taken for granted that they can go and meet there. So basically, as a parent, my major concern is making sure that our kids are safe. And so whatever development is there, we want to make sure it adds to our community and doesn't take away from what we have right now with the sidewalks. Our kids ride bikes everywhere. They're able to walk to the pool. And so we just want to make sure that that safety is a paramount importance. And so, again, if there can be a crosswalk at Fassinger and Broad Meadow where our kids are walking to the pool, that would be great. You know, maybe we look at, you know, solar LED, you know, lights, kind of, no, listen, you know, there are kids here, and you need to slow down as you drive up the hill or down the hill, whatever that is. You know, we want to make sure that, as we talked about the water runoff, I'm also the pool board president, and we want to make sure that, you know, our community asset is protected. And so right now, we're not having problems. You know, we want to make sure that if there are problems, that, you know, that we're not left kind of on our own to solve those, that the developer would be held responsible, because right now, everything is fine. And so we just want to make sure that, you know, that those things are considered. I understand, too, there's a retention pond, and we want to make sure that that, you know, kind of fits the community, and it's not just an afterthought, that it's something that, you know, kind of fits in. I don't know if it needs a fence. I don't know. I don't know what that looks like, but, you know, something that, again, takes into consideration that we already have 360 homes in this neighborhood. And so adding 20 homes is great, and we're all excited to have that, but we just want to make sure that it takes into consideration what we already have. And one final piece is, so where these homes are being placed, there is shared property. Basically, as they're driving up the hill, there's Fassinger Lane, and the pool pays to maintain that property. And we don't have an HOA, so we rely on community support to landscape that and to pay property taxes. So if those folks would be willing to, as part of their HOA, to contribute to that, we would greatly appreciate it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Colleen. RJ, anyone else?
Yeah, we've got one more. Let me get him on screen here. It is either Eric, oh, I'm not going to get this last name right. It's perhaps Cottone, Cotton?
Yeah, it's Eric Cottone. Thanks, everybody. And hello. So yeah, you got it pretty close there. Yeah, I just also wanted to comment on the development, the Fassinger Farms development going here near Brook Park. Dennis and Colleen said really everything that I wanted to say, but just a second what they said. I'm also a parent here in Brook Park. I'm also a board member on the pool board. Safety is definitely a concern coming up Fassinger Lane. If you've ever driven up Fassinger, you'll know that the sightlines are not great on that road where the new neighborhood is going to go. And there are some talks about crosswalks right there at an intersection coming up Fassinger Lane where the visibility just isn't great. So just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that, and make some considerations for safety devices either at that intersection, flashing lights, potentially rumble strips, something of that nature, just to make everybody aware that kids are crossing there. We have a ton of kids that love to walk in this neighborhood and walk down to the pool. So really, really important that we take that into consideration. And then also wanted to also mention the stormwater retention pond. You know, it's a beautiful drive up Fassinger Lane. We've got trees lining the streets coming up there. We view it as an asset in this neighborhood, that you have this nice peaceful drive coming up to all the houses. So we just want to protect that aesthetic and make sure that any water retention pond that goes in fits into the neighborhood. And we look at any trees that are going to be removed along Fassinger Lane. Like I said, that's a pretty important asset to this neighborhood. So with that, I'll just turn it back over. Thanks for the time today.
Eric, I did not get your address in the public comment sign up.
Oh, sorry. It's 902 Meadow Crest Drive.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have anyone else, RJ, for right now?
Not for anything that isn't related to the public hearings.
Okay. All right then, let's move on to the public hearing then. This, I'd like to open the public hearing on the ordinance to amend Part 13, Title III of the zoning code to further regulate the keeping of household pets and adding associated definitions. RJ, do you want to give a little summary of that? Bob, you want to do that? Who wants to do that?
But, you know, Bob, since you've been here since the beginning of this, maybe unless you want me to take it away on anything.
Well, you know, I'll start, and feel free to jump in at any point. This has been an ongoing discussion for more than a year. There have been some attempts to make some adjustments in our enforcement through nuisance ordinances. It's felt that some additional regulation may be necessary so that this whole idea of regulating household pets was taken back to the Planning Commission. There was a subcommittee formed of residents, Planning Commission members and staff, to discuss alternatives, talk through potential drafts of regulations. The Planning Commission subsequently did review a draft ordinance and make some recommendations forward. We're now at the point of a public hearing based on those discussions that took place. I'd like to thank everybody who has participated at this point. And opening up, RJ, Gavin, if you want to add anything to that discussion, that's fine.
I think that's a pretty good summary, Mr. Graham. I would just add that, just from a sort of substantive standpoint, what we did in this ordinance was, number one, define kennel, also animal rescue and foster or fostering. So those terms were not defined, and we identified which zoning districts they would be permitted in. And then the way we, after a lot of discussion, as you pointed out, and a lot of volunteer hours, and a lot of back and forth, you know, the way that we propose in this draft ordinance to regulate household pets is essentially to use the term customarily incidental, so that keeping household pets in a residential dwelling is permitted as long as it's customarily incidental to the keeping of pets. And the reason why we chose that terminology is because there's some case law out there that found, they looked favorably upon a similar ordinance that contained that language. And what it does is, it allows the zoning officer to sort of look at a totality of the circumstances to apply a reasonable person standard, because it's so difficult to do a sort of one-size-fits-all based on, you know, different neighborhoods, different property sizes, really even different types of animals. So, again, as you pointed out, there are nuisance regulations in the General Offenses Code that address things like, you know, animals getting loose, animals going to the bathroom where they shouldn't, you know, animals barking incessantly. So this is more from the zoning perspective to, you know, acknowledge that, you know, keeping of pets is accessory to a residential dwelling. However, it can't go beyond what's customarily incidental. And again, we chose that rather than choosing a number, you know, you cannot have more than X dogs, cats, whatever, because number one, from an enforcement standpoint, you know, we had concerns about really the ability to enforce that, to have counts of animals at various homes, and to for the zoning officer to be able to say, you know, I've heard there's five dogs in here. Can I, you know, exactly how do you go in and check on that? So if the animals are not causing a problem, you know, and they are sort of, you know, within the customarily incidental concept, then it will be permitted under these new regulations. And I don't know if I, Ms. Susko was part of a lot of those meetings towards, especially towards the end, so I don't know if she has anything to add. And Zachary, I think, was too.
Yeah, there was just one thing I wanted to specifically point out, because this was something that was added after I was here, which is the fostering definition and language. I'm sure there are going to be some folks that have questions about that as they, you know, watch it move forward through the council process. I felt that it was important that we made it clear that we weren't trying to put any limits on, you know, sort of the normal customary way that people may foster an animal to see if it's a good fit for their home, or, you know, there may be, you know, you're taking care of one dog for a few months until it gets a permanent placement somewhere else, and differentiating that from an actual kennel, you know, a commercial operation, or a larger scale rescue, state licensed facilities, you know, that's very different from somebody just having this getting-to-know-you period with a pet that is very common now, especially when people adopt from rescue situations. So I thought that definition was really important. If anyone has any questions, you know, feel free. But I just wanted the public to know, we are not telling you, you can't foster a dog to figure out if it fits with your family. That is still okay under this ordinance.
Yes, David. We can't wait, but we can't hear you.
Let me try to mute and unmute you, David.
Nope. Let's go. Nope.
If you have headphones, try to plug them in and unplug them. Sometimes that works.
So the way we'll start this out while they're troubleshooting is that we'll have, council members have questions or comments that they would like to make, or any changes that they feel like in the ordinance, and then we'll take citizen comments, the same thing, and see, and then go from there. So this is a fact gathering. David, are you on yet? No. Okay.
Maybe try to log off and rejoin and see if that helps you. I'll let you right back in.
So the goal of a public hearing is to hear the public and kind of work through the details in this, so that hopefully, when we bring it before council, hopefully at the next meeting, it will be something that we'll be ready to vote on. So I think that's what we're looking toward. So I'm filling time right now. It's been beautiful weather today.
I think I've got him back on. I just got to find him so I can turn his mic on. Hopefully it works this time.
I'll make a preliminary comment.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Thank you.
I'm only bringing this up as just a basis for conversation, really, just to remind everyone that ordinance number 701.08, and I'm not taking directly from it, but already provides that any, so it could be one, two, and 20, any dog or cat that does any of the following is subject to these things, that keeping them in any manner that is a menace to health, comfort, or safety, because I know safety is one of the issues that brought this current discussion to light, that habitually barks, yells, screeches, yelps, or bays, disturbing the quiet, another thing that was of concern, and that no person shall keep or harbor a dog, cat, any number of those things, other than in a manner which constitutes a nuisance. All I wanted to say is remind everyone, their nuisance ordinance addresses, already addresses a number of the concerns that have been raised in the past. I reviewed all of the videos, and that it's kind of a basis for, I guess you could say, this proposed ordinance as being a potential improvement in addition to that base. That's my comment.
Thank you. That's extremely helpful, actually, Shelley, to kind of bring everybody up to speed who wasn't through the process of us updating that nuisance ordinance. So thank you. That was very good. David, are you speaking?
No. Oh, I did tell him he could call in, so he made that.
Oh, wait. Wait, did you hear me there?
Yeah.
Turn up your volume.
Yeah, speak louder.
Okay. Let me check something really quick. I think I can.
No, you're perfect right now.
Got it.
Okay, then I will not move a muscle.
Now do you remember your question?
Okay, so, yeah, I know. That's, I'm trying to remember it now. So I had, I know the one question that came to mind. The language keeping or fostering, I just want to make sure there's not a, you know, a hole there that we're not addressing, you know, that taken together, keeping and fostering is, you know, covers, you know, everything that we wanted to cover in terms of language. So I guess that's for Mr. Rob.
Is there something you think that we might be missing using that?
No. No, there's nothing that comes to my mind. I just, you know, just because we're using the two words, I just didn't want it to be the, that might slip between them.
I think the longtime working title was just keeping of household pets as accessory use. And then, as Ms. Susko pointed out, we wanted to make sure we included that fostering language. So we sort of thought keeping covered it, but we, you know, we wanted to be clear on the fostering as well. So I think between the two, I really do think we're covered.
Okay, okay, that's great. And then the other question that had popped into my mind, so the customarily incidental language, we're pretty comfortable with that from a legal standpoint as not being too vague, because I agree with your explanation. As long as we're comfortable with that, I think that's better than a hard set number. I just want to make sure we are comfortable with that.
Sure. No, I mean, it was, that language was upheld in a 2009 Commonwealth Court case, and that's, we thought that was just a really good way of addressing it, because we had a lot of talk about the numbers, and it just, it always ended up seeming arbitrary. And again, because there's so many different factors. So, you know, we thought, we really thought that, look, as long as this is not going beyond that customarily incidental. And the case talks about a house that had 17 Siberian Huskies. And the court said, look, you know, a reasonable person knows that keeping 17 Siberian Huskies is not customarily incidental to a residential dwelling. That, you're almost essentially changing the use of the dwelling by the amount of animals you're keeping. So we feel pretty good about, you know, that language is a standard.
Okay, okay, great. That's, those were just kind of my two legalese questions. So I might have some other comments on particular language as we go, but I just wanted to get those two broad ones out first.
Are there any other comments or questions from Council Trish?
Not a question, but I just want to remind our residents and everyone that the Allegheny County still covers us with many of their pet and animal ordinances as well. And to remind folks that dogs do need to be licensed in Allegheny County, and the rules regarding kennels, et cetera, do apply to us here at McCandless as well.
Okay, thank you. Good, good education on the keeping of animals. One thing that I was interested in possibly adding is, under the definition of fostering, I looked up how long fostering, because you could, how long, if we needed to put maybe a time limit for fostering, so people couldn't say, I am fostering these 17 dogs. I'm not really, you know, keeping them. So I looked it up, and it seems like no more than six months from the different animal shelters that I looked up, the rescue places. They usually say it's like three weeks to six months. Do you think we should add no longer fostering, no longer than six months in there? Do we need that?
I guess you'll, my first reaction to that is, you know, fostering would be subject to that same customarily incidental standard, so that, you know, you would never be able to have, it's the same kind of concept. The 17 dogs, you know, you would not be permitted whether fostering or just being kept. And I guess the other thing with the length of time, it just seems like it would be tough from an enforcement standpoint. It's something we could put in, because I think it's just sort of a clarification. So, you know, I'll leave that up to council. I don't think it's a significant enough change that if we add it, we would need to readvertise for a new hearing and sort of start this process over again. It was just more of a clarification. So with that in mind, I defer to council. So with that in mind, I defer to council.
I, I also, one more thing wanted to ask was, it was said by a person that has a number of dogs, that one of the reasons that they moved to McCandless is because there wasn't a dog ordinance, which is what we're trying to clarify. But if someone came to me and said, so how many dogs can I have? Without going through a little legal dissertation, what would I say? What would be the answer to that?
I think the best way to answer really is to say, really, it depends. And I know that's, that's a terrible thing, terrible thing to have to say, but it really does depend on, you know, how, how many, how many animals are you proposing? How big is your lot? How big is your yard? How densely populated is your neighborhood? Those are all the things that could go into that analysis when Ms. Susko is, is, receives a complaint and says there's, you know, there's four dogs here, you know, and, and they're causing a real problem. Again, it, we have to keep making that distinction between causing a problem, which is covered by the nuisance general offenses ordinance, and the act, you know, the use going beyond sort of customarily incidental. So if you live in, you know, an area with large lots, I think you'd be able to tell them, hey, look, you can have, you know, a reasonable number. It's a reasonfulness standard, for lack of a better, you know, explanation. It's just, it's, it's kind of difficult to have, you know, a direct answer to that question without knowing the rest of the facts.
I'm just, you know, residents call us with all kinds of questions. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what I'm going to say without sounding like a politician.
No, you're right.
From an enforcement perspective, since I'm going to be the one that, you know, has to, has to make the first line call, is if the animals are not, you know, causing a nuisance under the nuisance ordinance, if you're able to keep them in a way that is not detrimental to their health and safety and to the character of the neighborhood, then, you know, it's, it's, again, it's hard to set an exact number for when that threshold changes. But, you know, with the language that's being proposed, it, it's, it's really just to be in the best interest of the health of the animals as well as the people that live near them.
Any other questions from councils? Shelley.
I just had a question. And, and RJ, I understand that kind of the zoning enforcement kind of falls to you. But there's also definitely a, a police enforcement issue at hand here as well. And when I watched the videos from the 2019 town council meetings, we heard from residents who alleged that many times they did call the police, for example, and the police said that there was, wasn't much they could do. And I think it seemed to me, now it wasn't on council then, so I'm trying to catch up. But it seemed to me that that was one of the things we were trying to solve for, to improve our ordinance so that it had more clarity. But yet it gave the enforcement officials adequate subjectivity to actually do something. And I was wondering if Chief Hawke had been, had an opinion on this and as, as to on these changes and their benefit to the town.
He might be on here.
He is, he is on.
Ryan, do you want me to turn your camera on or no?
Your preference, RJ, doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, it, it helps for the recording, so.
I'm sorry, I don't have.
This is Chief Hawke. This is our chief of police.
Hello, everyone. Uh, to, to address it, Shelley, I would say, kind of this, I would kind of reiterate what Gavin said. From an enforcement standpoint, depending on what the officer, each situation, each call is unique. But depending on what they find whenever they arrive once seen, is how they come to the determination as to whether there's something to be, you know, enforcement to be had. I know a lot of times they use their discretion when it comes to these matters because pets and such bother some folks more than others. Me and Mrs. Zachary were just involved with a resident who, you know, is having particular issues where maybe others wouldn't think it a big, a large issue. And while she wants the officers to take enforcement, and it may or may not be merited. I believe common sense and discretion plays a big role in these kinds of calls. If we have clear and definitive ordinances and they can be enforced when the officers are on scene, they would have no problem if it, if the situation dictated to, to take that action. You know, if they have to cite somebody for an ordinance violation, they wouldn't hesitate if, if it was appropriate.
Well, that's really my question to you. I assume that you've read this, this new lang, this new ordinance. And do you feel that it is helpful and supportive to your officers in your enforcement activities?
I believe it will be. Anything that, that adds clarification and assists the, you know, the arm of the law, so to speak. If they feel it necessary, considering the totality of the circumstances, they certainly would. And any clarification you folks can provide to us definitely helps.
All right, thank you. My question.
So let me just kind of spin off that a little bit, Chief Hawke. And that is that, now this is a zoning ordinance. So this would not, I mean, the nuisance ordinance are what the police would enforce, right? And, and issues those certifications, but this is a zoning ordinance. So how will you communicate this? How will the officers communicate this? Am I right in, RJ, that you would be the one to, to see about the zoning violation?
Typically, yes.
Okay, so how is that communication going to happen so that you get this?
Officers that might be called would relay that to the residents. If we can assist RJ or Mr. Shoneman up there, we do in any way we can, Kim La, like recently with sheets and some issues. So what we would probably do, if it's not, if it was not within our purview, we would take a report anyway and make sure that it gets forwarded to RJ or Jeff Shoneman so that they could take action.
Right.
Thank you. Perfect. That's, that's exactly what I wanted, to let people know that even though this isn't under enforcement by our police, that our police are not going to say, oh, well, you have to call someone else. Because that's very frustrating to residents. So I appreciate that initiative of saying, you know what? We will make sure this gets into the hands of a proper person. Thank you. Thank you as always. Thank you. Any other comments from council right now before we open it up? The council will still have another chance, but if, if you want, all right. Dave?
Just really quickly, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Just really quickly, I had a couple just minor things with wording. Do you want me to do that now or wait till later?
If they're really quick, let's do them now.
Okay, really quick, in 13, 13.24A, the second sentence after, after the dash, so the second sentence, the number of household pets kept as an accessory use. And then it says whether such pets are owned, adopted, or being fostered. Can we, would it be better to say whether such pets are owned, adopted, being fostered, or otherwise kept?
Well, I, and I, I'll defer to Gavin for the final word on this. But I think the reason that we specify those three words is because we want to make it clear that that does not necessarily apply to pets that are being cared for in a kennel or rescue scenario.
Okay, and, and I agree, that was, that was the intent, to try to make that distinction, as, as I recall it. Is there, is there, I guess I'll sort of ask that same question I asked you initially from your first comment. Do you, do you view there to be another option of keeping beyond the owning, adopting, or being fostered? Do we, do you think we might be able to add or we need?
Well, be, because it's, you know, because you have the kennel, you know, the kennel or the rescue situation, which I think are, are treated differently, right? So somebody can actually be, you know, their, their kennel is a use and animal rescue is a use. So my worry would be a residential unit saying, well, no, the thirty-seven pets I have are not all owned, adopted, or being fostered. I am, you know, rescuing, yeah, I, I, I don't know. I just don't know if there's a potential hole there.
Well, so the, this, the way that we're adding the definitions in this proposed amendment would limit those larger types of operations to, I believe it's the C3 district only.
Right.
So that would actually just not be a permitted use in a residential scenario.
So it's already eliminated by the fact that that's just not a permitted use in that residential area to begin with.
Right.
Okay.
Was there anything else, David?
Yeah, then it was just the minor thing about switching the, the section symbols around in the definition of kennel.
Yep, that's, that's, that's a good catch, and we will make that change in the final version.
That was actually from a resident, so.
Yes.
I can't take credit.
Thank you, Mr. Walcottskis.
Yes, thank you, Greg. Are there any other council comments before we open it up to the public? Remember, if you're a member of the public and you wish to speak, please put your name, your address in the chat box. We're taking comments right now only on the accessory use of household pets right now. Okay, RJ?
Yes, so I've, I've got two residents signed up to speak. I believe the first is John Owen. I'm gonna find him in here. There you are, sir. If you could please state your address for the court reporter.
Yes, my name is John Owen, and I'm at 9528 Park Edge Drive. Thank you very much. I've spoken before. The council, I was one of the people on the meetings a year or so ago. I live directly across the street from the person at 9531 Park Edge. It's the house burned down. That was the subject of the many complaints of our neighbors. And I'd like to start out by saying I thank the subcommittee that was formed. I especially thank my next door neighbor, Steve Scheidler, for volunteering to serve on that committee. I think that committee has done a great job. I appreciate what they've done and their volunteer and their hard work that's gone into it. They deserve this, our support. And I would, I just commend them for doing what they've done. I do think that it is critical. This is not going to go away, this issue. This person across the street from me fully attends, from what I understand, to build a kennel. They will foster, they will own, they will adopt, and they will attempt to violate this law every which way they can, if they, if they can do that. So with, with that said, you know, I would, I thank former council member WaKakis for submitting his comments. And I do agree with Greg that it would be better to put a firm limit, you know, customarily incidental, not to exceed some number of dogs or cats. I think that would be better, clearer, and easier for our police department to get a handle on. And the zoning folks as well. So I would, I would say it's fine the way it is, but it, it's okay the way it is. It could be a little bit better if there was a firm limit.
John, are you still there?
Yes.
Oh, we, I've, I've got him for the recording. He should, he should show up, okay?
Hello?
Oh, Kim, you might be frozen.
Everything is frozen.
She is frozen.
Can anyone hear me?
We can hear you.
I can hear you.
I'll, I'll text her.
Hello?
All right, let's see if that helps.
Okay. Everyone, you can hear me, but you all are frozen and I cannot hear you.
I'm going to tell her to disconnect and reconnect, see if that helps. And, and John, I do have what you were speaking before. That will all show up on the recording.
Just for the, oh, sorry, John.
I think I was pretty much done, just again, expressed my support for the, the ordinance the way it is. But I think it could be improved if there was a limit. Oh, thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, John.
Ju- just for the recording, we're having the issue that President Zachary is frozen. But we can still hear her, but we can still see and hear each other. So we're having the exact inverse problem that President Zachary is having.
Yeah, I'm wondering if Zoom's feeling a little hiccoughy tonight.
Could be.
All those Steeler fans zooming the game to people somewhere.
Using up the bandwidth.
Yeah.
Okay, I think she's going to be trying to get back in here in a second.
RJ, could I ask a quick favor? Can I get the spellings of the residents when they speak, the last name spelling?
Yes, yeah, the, the last gentleman was John Owen, O-W-E-N.
Thank you. I'm just anticipating difficult names.
Yeah, yeah, the, and are, are you able to see the little camera blocks on your screen? Do they pop up with the people's names?
I have everybody's, so sorry. I'm not residents, but.
Okay, because any, anyone, when they have a video, they should pop up on, on the screen for a little bit. And so far, they've had their names spelled correctly, if that helps. I'm just going to hit the pause button on the recording until we get her back in here. Recording now.
Okay, all right, good, all right. So David, did you finish your comment or did you have another comment?
I finished mine. And I think our, our last public comment was done, but I think we have one or two more public comments as well.
Yes, we, we do have one more.
All right. If you want to move on with that one, that's, that will be fine.
Okay, and, and this, this, we've got coming up, Steve Scheidler. I'm going to send him a camera and microphone request. There you are, Steve.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I'd like to, to just kind of respond, David, to maybe one of your questions earlier. And I think when, as a committee, when we talked about customarily incidental and how to put a number to it and so forth. You know, Allegheny County requires dog licensing for every animal in the county. So they have a complete database of addresses for each animal and their location. I'd suggest it to the committee that maybe the town engineer could take that information, overlay it on your GIS mapping in the R1, R2 zones. And you could come up with a density mapping for, for dogs and such. So if you ever got into the situation where you needed to, to really drive that, the information's available for council. Within the committee, I got basically the agreement, hey, that's, sounds like a good way to go moving forward. But it was kind of a handshake. Obviously, it's not written into the ordinance that that's how it will be done. But RJ, you'll certainly have the ability to do so when people start asking you about those types of things. I think that's one comment. I'd like to just make sure all, all the council members understand, because I know not everybody had been involved from day one. But that's certainly a good way to do it. The other thing is that, you know, I do live across the street, so does Jack. We've, we've been inundated in the past with issues. And Shelley, you'd mentioned earlier about the nuisance issues. And, and I believe I did report out back in 2019 about, you know, my run-ins and issues and inability to, to get anything done because of that. You know, and I, and I heard Chief Hawke speak earlier, and I appreciate that. And, and I understand every situation is a little different. I don't think that anybody in the neighborhood is really trying to attack or go after its individual. I think it's the other way around. And I think it's unfair if we can't enforce some of those nuisance laws moving forward. So we would appreciate certainly some focus on that in the, in the future, should this become an issue moving forward. The third, I'd like to say, certainly I would have preferred a number. The third, I'd like to say, certainly I would have preferred a number, um, in there, but understanding that this is a committee, we all have to come consensus. Customarily incidental, uh, does make sense. There is, uh, case precedence for that, certainly in, in the sightings that Gavin had mentioned earlier, and, and I agree with that. And I just also want to say that, um, thank you for letting me be a part of that, uh, because I really enjoyed it. I met a lot of good people. I learned a lot of interesting, uh, things, uh, from those individuals, and I really enjoyed, um, you know, donating some time to the community. It, it, it was somewhat fulfilling, if you will, at the end of the day. And I want to thank, uh, I want to thank council for the support on, uh, making the changes to the ordinance. And that's all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Uh, though I do not have anyone else signed up, um, to comment. And Leah, did you get Steve's address? Do you need that for the record?
Sure.
Okay, it is, uh, 9534 Park Edge Drive.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from council? All right, um, hearing none, then we will close the public hearing on the keeping of household pets. And we will open the public hearing on the ordinance authorizing a request of McCandless Square Development for electrical easements along town property located near the intersection of Blazer Drive and McCandless Drive.
Madam President, this is a, a request that the, the town had received from the McCandless Square developers, uh, Continental Properties. And Mr. Mike Hudak, or Hudak is, uh, present this evening to give us a little bit more background, uh, an explanation of the need of the, uh, this work to be done crossing the town property, and a little bit of additional background as to why this location may have been chosen versus other alternatives. So, um, RJ, if you're able, oh, Mike is up.
I'm here.
Okay, so Mike, if you could go ahead and give us a little bit of background?
Okay, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I don't represent Penn Power. Uh, I'm, I'm trying to be the, the middle man here, the messenger. Obviously, we are developing McCandless Square, uh, and through our conversations that really initiated about the time we got approval, uh, last year, Penn Power, uh, identified the need per the TUC to provide a, a redundant service. And that required upgrades to their, uh, electric service along Blazer Drive. And so at that time, probably, uh, early in the fall, uh, between myself, my engineer from CEC, Dan Stewart from Penn Power, and Bruce from the town, uh, we worked through, uh, uh, an alignment that we thought was least intrusive. Uh, the Blazer Drive right of way is relatively tight. Uh, there's roadway guide rail sidewalks. So we, and, and also Pine Creek, uh, near Ingamar. Uh, there were wetlands that we had to deal with that, uh, Bruce kind of, uh, one of the first things we had to do was make an adjustment around Pine Creek, uh, with the engineering team. And so what we did is we ended up last fall settling in on an alignment that we thought was the, the best solution. And, uh, subsequent to that, uh, Penn Power provided right of way agreements. So this, this alignment affected not only our property, uh, our neighbor's Mr. Spurlings, and also the town of McCandless. So we all received, uh, right of way agreements, uh, to review, sign. Our, our engineer put together the, the exhibits that identify the areas. And so I think presented to you right now is, is the, um, sort of the, the final form. I was, uh, Gavin had made a request, uh, to make an adjustment to the language in the right of way agreement, which, uh, Penn Power acquiesced to. So between the agreement, the language in the agreement and the exhibits that were prepared by CEC, uh, this is what was viewed as the, the best solution, uh, for the, the, the power requirements along Blazer Drive.
Um, I just wanna jump in real quick. Uh, I have two documents I received. Did we want me to be screen sharing those right now? Or is that related?
Uh, so the two documents, it may be helpful if you share the CEC exhibit.
Okay. Give me one second. Okay. I've, I've got one that's got all kinds of blue and red markings on it. And then I've got one that appears to be just.
Black and white?
Yes.
Black and white, yes. That's the one.
The black and white is probably the easier to follow.
Okay. Here I am! Oh, gosh, okay. Hang on, let me, let me mute one of yours, so you don't, so you don't double here. Um, oh, boy, Kim, where did you go? Let's see. Did she hang up her phone yet? Can anyone tell? I think she did.
She's nodding yes, and she is muted.
Okay. All right, I got an echo for a second, panicked. There we go.
Hi, friends! You don't know what I've been through. Okay, all right, please, continue on. I lis- I heard everything you said. Go ahead.
Can everyone see this document now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, so Penn Power is bridging the, the gap that exists between the, uh, the service lines along Ingamar Road. So the first pole, uh, is on, along Ingamar Ro- Road, uh, near Pine Creek. It's about where you're pointing. So they are bridging the gap between there and the driveway into the funeral home of Mr. Spurlings. And, uh, as you can see, uh, the, we, we couldn't come straight across to the north side of, uh, of Blazer Drive, we being Penn Power, so forgive me, uh, because of the, the culvert, uh, Pine Creek and, uh, the sanitary sewer easement, wetland. There was an assortment of issues that made it impossible for Penn Power to do what they needed to do. So they, so it's more of a diagonal across Blazer Drive to McCandless, and then along, uh, Blazer Drive, holding tight, uh, to the, to the concrete sidewalk along Blazer Drive. And then there's an existing pole in Mr. Spurlings' property. So, so that's the gap that they're bridging. Uh, what is shown in the gray shade is the right of way that they're asking for. This is to provide sort of a safety measure outside of the, uh, the electric service plus the need for guy wires at the poles to provide structural support. And, and again, I, I think you can hopefully in, uh, see that efforts were made to try to minimize, uh, but they are dealing with the, the existing circumstances of, of the roadway, the sidewalks, the easements, the, the stream, et cetera.
So I, I have some questions about this. Um, I heard what you said, but it doesn't make any sense to me that it cannot cross over right in front of Spurlings and go on their property, which they own right across the street that is for sale, since that eventually is the side that the, um, utilities are gonna be.
Well, it's.
And they're getting ready to make a development over there anyway that's going to need power.
Okay, uh, yeah, our, our conversation started off with, uh, uh, this sort of alignment. Again, we couldn't move it across, and, and we were involved with, with Bruce in those discussions back in the fall. Uh, the, if, if, if you're, what I'm hearing you is to run it along the inside of the curb on the south side of Blazer Drive. That will have a far more intrusive impact, uh, to Mr. Spurlings' property. I, I don't know that he would sign a right of way agreement for that. So that obviously puts all of us in a bit of a very difficult situation.
So you're, so you want us to put those poles on our property instead?
It's not us, it's Penn Power.
Okay, okay, no, but I mean, whoever.
Yeah, I'm not the utility company. I'm, I'm just explaining the, the history of how we got to where we are right now. And, and again, those conversations started in the fall of last year, uh, almost two ago.
I understand that. They would be less intrusive if they were buried. Why would these utilities not be buried?
It would be unusual to have a, a section of a transmission service line that would be part above ground and part below ground. So, uh, in, in front of Mr. Spurlings' property, in front of our property, it is above ground. Along Ingamar Road, it is above ground. So it would be very unusual. Also, where you have Pine Creek and that culvert, uh, it would be extremely difficult, if not next to impossible, to route that section underground. Efforts are being made to avoid Pine Creek for obvious reasons. Uh, so again, from the engineer's perspective, uh, I, I can't dispute that this isn't the most or, or the least intrusive routing or the most appropriate routing for Penn Power's service.
Are there other council members that would like to make comments?
Madam President, Dave Smith.
Yes, Dave. I can see you now.
What's that?
I said, I can see you now, thanks.
Um, so, so with this easement, uh, I mean, it looks like the, you know, this is in favor of Penn Power. Um, I, I just haven't read it closely enough, or I don't know what the plans are or anything like that. Is this an exclusive easement? Is this something also the gas company, Verizon, whoever else can piggyback off of as a, you know, as a multi-utility easement?
It, it, it is not an exclusive easement. Part of, part of the, the utility services would, the, a majority of the utility service falls within the right of way of, uh, Blazer Drive and, and the, sort of the lead section of McCandless Drive. But it, it is not, uh, exclusive to just Penn Power. So the gas company could be within that right of way.
Okay, so, um, yeah.
They have the right to be there.
Yeah, so if they're, yeah, if it, if it was ever needed, for whatever reason, it is still possible for, you know, gas lines, internet cables, whatever. Um, you know, back in my day, it was always gas, electric, and phone, but that's a little bit different now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are there any other comments from council? Um, RJ, is there, um, any, um, public that has signed up to make comments on this issue?
I did not have anybody sign up.
Okay. Okay, um, I will tell you that I do not like, um, the easement being on our green space property of electric lines that cross over McCandless, then another pole there right in front of, you know, that's a sanctuary, a wetland sanctuary that was donated to the town, all that on McCandless Drive, the plaque is there. Um, and it seems like it's not in, um, I don't know, it doesn't really kind of go along with what we have going down there. And, and that is a property we've really not decided what we wanted to do with, or anything. Maybe green space, maybe a, um, public garden, maybe, I, I don't know what we want to put there. But we would be limited, as you saw in the contract, no trees, no bushes, you have to maintain it, plus the unattractive poles and the wires everywhere. And then after it crosses McCandless Drive, then it crosses back over Blazer again. I would like to see, um, the electric company, um, approach, um, Mr. Spurling and, um, see if something could be worked out with him on that property.
Our biggest concern is timing. Uh, we've been at this since last fall. We are in need of having electric service the first quarter of 2021 to meet our obligations to opening the, the project at the end of 2021. We've already been hit by COVID. These conversations did occur, I, I understand, uh, you were not part of those conversations, but they were conversations that included representatives from the town. Uh, you know, maybe if we were having this, those conversations a year ago, it may be easier for us to help the power company address your concerns. But, uh, we're in a very, very difficult situation at this point from a timing standpoint.
I, uh, I got a message from the Public Works Director that he wanted to chime in. I think I've got him unmuted here. Mark, can you hear us?
I am here. Good evening.
Hi, Mark.
With the proposed location of this new electric service, it appears that they want to put a pole very near to the corner at the intersection of McCandless and Blazer Drive. And it's going to be, looking at the drawing, that pole is probably gonna be in a spot where it's gonna interfere with site distance for people pulling out of McCandless Drive onto Blazer. I, I would certainly think Penn Power could, if they had to put a pole, and they could find a better place than that to do it. My other question is, the Trader Horn and all that area was served by an existing line that comes, crosses West Ingamar Road and comes in like to the back corner of the property. Why are they not willing to use that?
As explained to us by Penn Power is, this is a part of the requirements of the PUC. So these, these regulations that exist now, uh, were likely not in effect in the, in the 1970s when, when Kmart first inhabited that site. So Penn Power is fulfilling an obligation of the PUC. This is their explanation of how they satisfy those requirements. Again, I'm not a representative of, of Penn Power, uh, but I do also appreciate your comment. And it, it's a very, your first comment, and it's very fair to ask why that pole is located inside that guy grill as opposed to outside that guy grill. That I can question my engineer tomorrow as to why it is shown in that location.
And I, I think my other thoughts on it, um, I guess I don't understand why that couldn't be put on the opposite side of, of Blazer Drive. You've got, looks like at least three poles that are going in, and it would be a shorter distance to carry it from Ingamar Road to a pole. Guess it would be on the west side of Blazer Drive and then cross over Blazer at that point, um, to meet up on the other side. Uh, it's just, anything that, that we can do to convince Penn Power that putting a pole on that corner is not a good idea. It's definitely gonna be a, a traffic issue, particularly if it's on the inside of the guy grill.
Yeah, and I, I think we could convince Penn Power of, of a slight modification there to address your concern.
I think ultimately moving it over.
Right.
Not, I mean, that, that resolves the issue with the corner site distance, but it's also gonna lessen the distance that they're traveling. So I would think, even if it's only 20 or 30 feet of wire, it's still a savings to them.
And.
Yes, see, as I see that, with where that pole's at, um, keeping in mind also that, that we as a town have the, and other things to come in that way, that, that pole could be a problem in, in many different ways.
I agree with you, Mark. I agree with you, Mark. Are there any other comments? I thought, Bob, did you try to speak up or was that interference?
No, I was actually just trying to measure something out roughly, um, pointing at the screen, so.
Madam President, I, I was going to ask, uh, Mike if, uh, I mean, you're, you're saying that, that the, you know, this is being done pursuant to PUC requirements. Public Utility Commission for people who don't know. Um, do we know, has Penn Power talked with PUC about, you know, this particular project? About other, you know, ways to accomplish what they need to do? You know, you, you can always appear before the PUC and ask for, uh, you know, uh, easing of, of requirements under certain circumstances. Do we know what kind of discussions they have had with PUC? Or are they just coming to us saying this is what PUC requires without having gone to them and, and had discussion?
This would be, this would be the latter. Uh, that's how it's explained to me is that this is to meet the PUC requirement, not that anyone met. And again, these conversations, I, I, I thought we had ironed out a layout last fall. That's why changes to the alignment now are much more concerning to us than had they been last year.
And, and so the issue with the inside of the, the elbow there is that, the, the current owner was unwilling to give an easement?
Uh, uh, again, we, what was presented was what was viewed, you know, we worked collectively to come up with the alignment that you, that you see. So what was, uh, presented to Mr. Spurling was effectively what you see. Uh, and what was required of him was, uh, you know, uh, agreeable to him. We didn't sit down with Mr. Spurling and say, look, you know, uh, you know, Penn Power is asking you to take 15 feet along the inside of your property as it extends to, uh, uh, to, to where the driveway is to the, to the funeral home. So that, there was never that conversation, again, because this was viewed as, uh, you know, the, the most acceptable route.
Are there any other comments from any council members?
I have a question slash comment. Was this design made with, uh, the possible development of the, um, the housing project in that corner in mind? I know that the space there was very limited unusable, buildable space, um, due to Pine Creek and et cetera. Um, even though it was like a two and a half acre parcel from what I recall. I'm just wondering if, if this was designed to make the, that other parcel become more buildable and more, uh, easy to do the project that is intended for that space.
So in our conversations with Mr. Spurling, uh, it, it, at some point, he, he effectively turned it over to Mr. Loizell. And so Keith and I have had several conversations, uh, about different things, including, uh, oh, the electrical service that Penn Power is providing. I know Keith met with Dan Stewart with Penn Power to make sure that they did not forget about him, that they understood that he was developing, uh, the property. And, and so, yes, the answer to that question is yes, they are aware. And, uh, Mr. Loizell is also aware of, of, of what Penn Power is providing.
Any other comments, questions?
This is Mark again. Can I just, one other question that I, I see on this. It shows an overhead line on the north side of Blazer Drive. Where is that ultimately going to go? Is that feeding the McCandless Square? Or is that going to, for some reason, continue along Blazer Drive?
That is the existing, uh, service. So at the driveway to the funeral home, to Mr. Spurling's funeral home, uh, everything to the left of that is the existing overhead service that, uh, runs in front of Mr. Spurling's property, the neighbor's property and our property.
Okay, so this is not a line that's, that's being put in to supply the, the Wexford Square, is, if I'm getting this right?
Uh, I'm not aware of Wexford Square. Do you mean McCandless Square? Yeah, so, yeah, so this is, uh, that connection, uh, again, that they were bridging that gap between Ingamar Road and what's in front of McCandless Square. So this is the transmission component of everything on, on our property. And, and then ultimately when Mr. Loizell develops his property, that's, that's part of the distribution, services that would, would feed those, those, uh, separate developments.
Okay, well, I, I guess I, I guess I can't get it into my, uh, my radar here. Be that the case, and there's a pole at the corner of Spurling's property. I don't see why they can't come up the other side of Blazer Drive and then do a crossover at that point.
Agreed, agreed.
And, and again, it's the timing of our conversations, you know, the disconnect between what was being discussed last fall and what we're talking about this year and, um, and, and the, the timing. I mean, it, uh, the, Mr. Spurling, uh, is, you know, it's going to, you know, I'm not sure what his position is on that. I'm not going to speak for Mr. Spurling.
Yeah, it just seems to me as, um, you know, with that other project in mind, that we're going to, that there's going to need to be cross lines again, coming back, crossing back over Blazer again.
Exactly.
Stand from that same side for that project.
Exactly.
But, but those lines exist, right? Again, everything west of Mr. Spurling's driveway is existing.
She's talking about his property across the street. From, Mr. Spurling owns the property across the street in the inside of that bend. And there's, there's a development that is planning possibly to go in there. So if it does, it's going to be hooked into this electricity too. So then you're going to have to run wires, what, across the street again to the wires?
It, it does cross the street again. It crosses over to our property.
Where does it cross over to your property?
It's not shown on this drawing, but there are, I believe, two poles in front of the, uh, Mr. Spurling's funeral home. It's not shown on this drawing. So there's a second pole in front of, in front of that, and then it crosses over towards the driveway to our property.
Does this other drawing help or is it not going to be on the second one either?
It is on that drawing. If you can follow the, the solid red line, there's a marking three, whoops, there. So there's a, a marking three dash one, um, zero A CSR. That line is between two existing poles. And then it crosses over from there to the driveway leading into, uh, our development at McCandless Square.
What about the red line down the center of the page? Is that a line too?
Which one are you referring to?
Down the middle, right there, straight up and down the middle of the page. What's that?
That is, I think that is the temporary service that they are working on right now. Uh, but that, there is a terminal pole to be set. And then everything underneath where that building will be, uh, will be underground.
Why can't you use that?
As explained to us by Penn Power, this is what is required to, for them to provide the redundant service.
All right, are there any other comments before we close the, the public hearing?
No matter what else happens, I'm sorry, this is totally spun holes. I also completely agree with Mr. Sabina in that the location of that pole, at the corner of McCandless Drive and Blazer is inappropriate and a safety hazard. So if nothing else can be worked out in terms of trying to get a, um, more direct route of this electric service, that pole, um, definitely should be relocated, in my opinion.
And I'll address that with our en, our engineer, uh, tomorrow morning.
And Mr. Sabina, is that just the one pole or is it both of those poles that are showing on either side of McCandless there? Or is that, or is that one not a pole?
One on the northern side, um, might be back further out of the intersection. I'm not, um, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, but if it's, if it's out as close to the intersection as, as the one on the, let's call it the eastern side, they are both going to be an issue at, at that intersection.
Yeah, I mean, just looking at it on this drawing, which I, you know, I know it's not as, as technically accurate, I'm sure in terms of distances, but if, looking at it on this drawing, in my mind's eye, picturing that intersection, to me, it looks like both of those poles would be an issue.
Yeah, I don't know if you can zoom in on that, RJ. There's one pole at McCandless Drive. And that is the one that I will speak to our engineer, whoops, uh, not, the black and white drawing, sorry. If you zoom in on that, so there's one pole that, that I understand. And, and I will talk to our engineers about that, why it's on the inside or the, uh, inside of the guide rail. That, that, that I understand. The next pole is, oh, I'm going to guess, 30 feet away from the intersection. It is located behind the concrete sidewalk. And then the, the pole that's further to the left is an existing pole. So the two poles at McCandless, one is close to the intersection, the other one is, is not.
Okay, so that one, uh, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the map, on the left side of McCandless is, is a little further away than it might have appeared on that other drawing.
Yes, and it should not be in the sight line.
All right, if there are no more comments, then we're going to close the public hearing on the, um, electrical easement along the town property. All right, I think, all right, thank you. All right, um, reports of committees, finance and, and personnel?
We have, uh.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Are we done with public hearings?
Yes, ma'am. We have finished our public hearings. It's always good to see you and thank you for joining us.
I'm sorry for interrupting.
No problem.
Okay.
All right, all right, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, we have two things tonight. We need to review checklist number eight dated August 1st through the 31st, totaling a little over $995,000. It's in each council member's packet and posted on the bulletin board and town website. I don't know if anybody had any questions there.
Okay.
Then the second item, uh, was to review the monthly financial summary and dashboard report.
Good evening, council. You received the financial report memo and dashboard and financial statements in a separate email on Friday. If anyone has any questions, I am happy to address those at this time. Similar to last month, we continue to receive real estate revenues as well as, um, earned income tax as expected. If the expenditure line items all appear as a major class to be, um, performing as expected as well. If anyone has, like I said, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address them at this time.
All right, anything else, Mike?
Nope.
Okay, all right, zoning committee. We, um, there was nothing to come up from the planning commission, um, no actions to report. But we, um, do have to go over the modifications that are, um, associated with the passenger farm plan. RJ, do you want to take that?
Sure, let me just, uh, pull up a couple people we've got here from the developer. See if Ed Moore is there, sending him a microphone request.
RJ, is it possible to send some of those requests a little bit ahead of time so we're not kind of waiting?
Sure.
Is there any way to do that to kind of, you know, I know it takes time, but, I mean, because this was like our next item. I'm sure they could be quiet even if they were unmuted until it was time for them to talk.
All right, we've got Mike here. Is Ed?
Can you hear me?
Okay, we can hear you. Uh, is Graham on tonight?
No, Graham's not here.
Okay, all right, good to go. Um, so I'm just going to give a brief introduction here. As hopefully council was able to take a look at, uh, over the weekend, I did upload a staff report that went over some of the changes. With compared to, we had four modifications, um, at the first presentation of this plan. Two were related to the stormwater basin, uh, slope as well as placement due to how deep it was. Uh, the other was a request to allow, um, the, the fill slopes throughout the development to be, uh, two horizontal to one vertical, so two to one versus three to one. Um, and of course, we also discussed the sidewalk modification request, which remains. Uh, so the revisions to the plan, the developer has met the code with regards to, they, they adjusted the stormwater basin so that they met the four to one interior slope instead of requesting a three to one modification. Um, and they made some changes to the height of lot 101 so that the depth from the bottom of the stormwater basin to where lot 101 plateaus, no longer is over 15 feet. So it does not have the requirement that it has to be a certain amount of feet away from the property lines anymore. It does have a requirement, um, for buffering, a certain amount of buffering. And, uh, once the developers have gotten into their presentation, they do have a color rendering that will show that buffering. Um, we do also have for consideration in the sidewalk waiver modification, a fee and lieu proposed based on the cost per, um, lineal foot of sidewalk waived. Uh, so we had Gateway, our town engineer, calculate out how many feet we were waving, basically multiply that by the cost per foot. And that was how we came up with the proposed fee and lieu. Um, so if anyone has any early on questions before I put the color rendering up and tell them to take it away, let me know, but otherwise I think, I think we're ready to.
We are.
Let them start. Okay. Yeah, all right. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. Ed or Mike, you have the floor.
I guess I'll take it. Uh, thanks, RJ. Um, yeah, I think you nailed it on the head. Uh, we removed two of the modification requests. One was the interior basin slope from a four, or from a three to one to a four to one. And now complies with the ordinance requirement. And as well as the 20-foot setback from a property line for any of the grading. And as well as the 20-foot setback from a property line for any of the grading, we've also adjusted the plans to accommodate that. We're proposing buffering our landscape plantings behind lots 101 and 102 as well as along the lot 101 line in the stormwater basin and along the entrance drive in the stormwater basin. So again, we, we still have two of the modification requests, but we have removed two. As far as we know, we have complied with all of the zoning and stormwater management comments from both of your engineers. So at this point, we'd just like to open it up for any more discussion.
The, the, go ahead, David, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, go ahead, that's okay.
It looks like the sidewalk is ending in the middle of an intersection. I thought we were going to go around that curve and then make a nice crosswalk.
Well, I think the last discussion was, we're committed to a sidewalk, we're committed to a crosswalk. It's just a matter of getting with the township engineer or whomever from the township and deciding the best possible location for that.
Okay.
So the plans haven't been updated because of that.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to end like in the middle of a three-way intersection because that's kind of what the drawing looks like there, so I just wanted to make sure. So this isn't completely updated then, it's just only updated for these yellow items that are written on here.
That's correct, yeah, that was the main focus. I think the last time we talked, we were committed to a sidewalk and a crosswalk. It's just, the discussion was, where does that happen, where is the best place for that to happen? And, and we're more than willing to continue that discussion with your engineers at some point.
And the way that the modification is proposed on the agenda does have a stipulation that if it is approved, it also includes placing the pedestrian crossing at a location to be approved by the town engineers.
David, you want to make your comment?
Yeah, just a couple things, I think that, that just might not be clear to, to a lot of people. I know it wasn't to me last time. The, the basin originally was going to be all the way, you know, to the east of this map. And then you guys moved it over here because of geotechnical limitations. But you guys actually lost two lots of development by doing that, right? So it was going to be 19 and now it's 17?
That's correct, yeah, the original plan, the original plan we looked at had 19 lots. And because of, because of that issue, we, we were forced to lose two because this is the, the best location for, for that storm basin.
Okay, and, and RJ, our town engineers have taken a look at this and, and made sure everything's okay with it in terms of
Yeah, so, so the main issue here is reviewing the geotechnical information that was submitted as part of the development, both for the, the grading, the two to one slope modification request, which most affects the south end of these couple lots here. Their report was that it was technically satisfactory.
Okay. And I'll have a couple other questions, but just out of curiosity, only because I haven't seen it. I've gotten just questions on the other side, which I know is not related to this. But there's going to be sidewalks coming down both side of Broad Meadow, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And I, I just had, you know, a number of people asking that, and I, I told them I thought so, I just wanted to make sure.
I'm sorry, I, I thought you were talking Brookview. Within our plan, there's sidewalks on both sides. As far as Broad Meadow, I can't comment on what's happening off of our property.
He's, he's actually about the graystone plan a lot, and there is a sidewalk involved with that development.
Yeah, 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 I was talking about the graystone plan over there. And then, yeah, like you said, I, I understand that, you know, somewhere around that bend, the sidewalk will go down to a certain point, not necessarily the point reflected on the picture here or the rendering here. But, but our engineers and you guys will all look at it to determine the best and safest spot for that. You know, for that crosswalk, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, and then, were, I, I don't know if, if you were on to hear the public comments towards the, the beginning of the meeting? Or did you kind of sign on a little bit later on?
I was, I, I was here, depending on what you're talking about.
I believe I saw you all get in early on.
Okay, yeah, so, you know, the, the, the feedback that I've gotten from, from residents and then, you know, the, the public comments from residents today, I think they're just, you know, their big concerns are the safety, which it sounds like you guys are working on, you know, making sure that that intersection is safe as possible. The, you know, they want to keep the aesthetics, obviously. The, the one question that I kind of had open was with the, you know, with the change in slope, you know, we're going from virgin soil to fill. Has, has it been really closely looked at to make sure there's going to be the, you know, the right level of compaction? And, you know, the, the concern of having water issues start when there never really has been one in the past is a big one? So can you just address that?
Yeah, we, we have an, we had an extensive geotechnical report prepared by a professional engineer. And that's been submitted and I believe reviewed by your township engineers.
That's correct.
So from that standpoint, the design is sound. And as far as the construction is concerned, they'll be on, that same geotech, geotechnical engineer will be on site to monitor the earth moving activities to make sure those are, those are happening as per the report. So, yeah, we, we feel that, that the due diligence has been done to, to make sure that that's safe.
Okay, and then, you know, I, I don't know if this would be a question for you or for RJ or for Bob. But, you know, there, there's never really been any major water issues in this area before. You know, what happens if this, this plan goes in and all of a sudden they start getting, you know, you know, having three to four major water incidents a year on this road? You know, what happens then? You know, what happens if, if that kind of happens and it's pretty clear that there were no problems before and now there are problems? Just how, I, I mean, is the neighborhood and the pool association left to fend for themselves? Or, you know, what would be the outcome of that?
I mean, the town does have enforcement capabilities through its stormwater management ordinance. So to the extent that, you know, it's, you know, those provisions would be violated, there is an enforcement process there as well as the private cause of action by any downstream property owners who would have, you know, potentially a legal, legal recourse against the developer. But I think generally, I know the town works very closely with the, you know, with the developers, engineers and, you know, reviews and, and make sure that, that everything's complying with our stormwater management ordinance. So if it would not be, that would be the first step, I know, would be if there's complaints. You know, those would, those would be reviewed by the town and we'd ensure that, you know, everything was, you know, constructed as it was supposed to be constructed.
And we have a construction bond that we will hold, and then we have a maintenance bond that we will hold just in case.
Yes. Okay, and, you know, I, I've kind of dominated the conversation here, so I'll hand it off to other people. But I did want to say, I mean, you know, people here are very excited about this going in. I know I've, in particular, impressed you guys on a lot of stuff. I appreciate you guys answering the questions and I appreciate you, you know, coming back and with this, with this new plan that, you know, where you've significantly cut down on the, on the request. So thank you guys for doing that and thank you for listening to the residents and the concerns.
You're welcome.
Are there any other comments, is there anyone else that would like to comment?
Madam President?
Yes, Angela.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for making the modifications that you did. It makes our decision process a lot easier and I appreciate that you listened to the feedback that you got. My first question was, the easement just pointed out here, is that what we were talking about? As far as having an easement where we could potentially build a sidewalk one day if we decided to?
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay. And my second question is, a comment that came out of the planning commission when they saw this plan was about the two to one fill slope, which I understand is technically sound and our engineers have, have said that it's going to be just fine. My question is, does it extend? I know that's behind lots 101 and 102. It's a little hard for me to read the, the numbers beyond that. Does that two to one slope extend on the southern side of all the lots? Or is it just behind 101 and 102?
No, it goes behind the next one, two, three, four, five lots, yeah, 101 through 107. There's a two to one slope in the back of those yards as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There was someone I heard, but I didn't see a hand.
We had both Shelley and Mike with their hands up.
Okay, all right, Shelley?
I also would like to say thank you to the developer for listening to us and modifying their plan. The only things that, and I'm just taking this from conversations that happen, and these are not deal killer scary things. But unless I just missed it somehow, I think that, I think one of the components of the former plan included the, the fencing because of the, I think it was a three to one versus a four to one slope in the basin. I still believe that it would be considering what's been described by the neighbors. Dave Foulsmann Smith has talked about it, that, that because of that sidewalk, that's in still fairly close proximity to the edge of that basin where children are walking to the school club and et cetera. I, I still think that safety fencing should be a component of the basin construction. I also think that, and I can't tell, tell you that the gentleman from Arondo Homes agreed to it. But I think that it wasn't, it sounded like it to me that with these new, with these new development plans and the topographical maps, that they would conduct a site study at the entrance of the new plan to just ensure that there was adequate visibility maintained around the curved fastener. And then the one thing that I'm bringing up because it was discussed and something that was requested was infiltration testing over the next two years of the basin since I think McCandless is today very, much more sensitive to stormwater issues. And that was just one more kind of component of ensuring that this basin is, is clearly working as it was developed to do. So those are my comments. Actually, I'd like the developer's comments on my comments.
Yeah, can we have a response to that that was kind of a comment question?
Michael, you want to touch on the fence, I'm sure that's, that's, I'll let you comment on that.
Yeah, so we're not opposed to a fence, I think, meeting the four to one ordinance that we have achieved, including all the buffering that we are, are doing when it comes to landscaping as well as, you know, trees and shrubs and things of that nature. I don't know if it is 100% necessary to have the fence, especially all the way around, which will not be used. Essentially, shrubs and trees and things along those nature tend to be a barrier, you know, or a buffer, if you will, to, you know, to, to mitigate anyone coming through that area. But, but again, we are not 100% opposed to that. It's, it's most certainly can be done, I just don't know if it is 100% necessary.
Yeah, four to one, four to one is pretty
I didn't, I didn't hear the second
You'd see it.
Comment that you had, you were kind of breaking up, so I cannot address that one.
Oh, it was that you had been asked at the last meeting to just have a traffic, a new kind of traffic site triangle, you know, site triangle study completed for the entrance of your new plan with the, and now you've modified it with the basin topography to ensure that there was still good visibility from the entrance to your plan down to that fastener curve that people said people tend to take that pretty quickly and
Sure, sure, and, and I think having painted side, walkways and things along, along that nature will, will mitigate that as well. But
I agree.
Township engineer does, does deem that a, a modified study, if you will, for, for walking and sidewalks is, is necessary. We will most certainly comply with that.
Ms. Bonholdt, we did have, not that he's a, a traffic engineer, Mark Sabina did go out and looked things over and can offer some comments, at least in the interim for you.
Yeah, I, I just took him off mute.
Joe, good evening again. To, to address the question that I had heard at the last meeting at the intersection of Broad Meadow and Fastener for site distance issues. I, I went down and if you travel over in the area, you will see some white Xs painted on the road. Those Xs are 75 feet up and down all three legs of that intersection. And in looking at that, the, the state requires that when you, when you do this for the purposes of site distance, that when you are looking around the corner, you have to be not more than three feet above the road surface. So I basically nailed in the intersection up there and took some pictures that I've sent to RJ and sent off to Bob. There is no site distance problem at the intersection of Broad Meadow and Fastener. There's, there's more than adequate, the posted speed limit over there is 25 miles an hour. Stopping site distance coming down the hill is about 250 feet. And you've got 200 and, I believe, 238 or 240 something. And coming uphill from Rochester Road, there's hundreds of feet worth of site distance. So there's not a, there's no site distance issue there, even with the way they want to construct the pond. The, the one question that I, the one thing that I did see, that it was kind of unclear to me, looking at the drawings that I had, exactly where this new road is going to be located. I made an assumption that it was going to be in the area of the existing driveway.
Closer to Fastener.
And when I
It's closer to Fastener.
When I, well, if it's, if it's closer to Fastener, then it's, it's probably a muted view. But using the existing driveway, looking up to my right, if I'm on Brookview Court, pulling onto Broad Meadow, when I looked over to my right, the site distance was horrible. There's some kind of a, an electrical transformer and some other man-made items up there as well as a lot of trees and shrubs in the closest yard. If, if the road is further down the hill, then it probably corrected, probably self-corrected what I saw up there that day. But other than that, there's, there are no other site distance problems there.
Mark, if they put a fence up there between the sidewalk and the detention pond or they're talking about trees or a shrub buffer, then wouldn't that interfere with it?
If they keep it back out of the, the road right of way, which it's a 50-foot right of way for Broad Meadow and for Fastener. So if anything that they do is back beyond the road right of way, it, it won't be a, an issue.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Now, if they're going to put shrubs and things in there, they're going to have to keep them trimmed back. But, I mean, other than that, it's, it shouldn't be a problem.
Mark, this is Dave Smith. The, you know, one, one concern, and I know people are going to be working on this, but I'm just going to reiterate it, is, you know, with wherever the crosswalk goes, you know, the, the line of sight issues are, are for vehicular traffic, I think, is one thing. I think what, what a lot of people are worried about is, depend, depending on where that, that crosswalk is, you can really come up on it fast without, without really seeing it too well. And I know you're saying the lines of sight are, are okay and everything. But, but just from living in the neighborhood with the, with where it is on that bend, you know, I could tell you it's tricky at the least. So I think what people are just concerned about is that everyone takes a real good look at it and, you know, puts it in the best place. And then I'm, I'm hoping, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but any kind of signage issues, I think, would be something that the town would do, you know, if it were a yield to crosswalk sign or something like that, if, you know, if there's stuff like that that we can look at just to make sure it's real safe for the kids and everybody who are going to be using that a lot.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
I still don't have an answer to my suggestion slash request that they do two years of infiltration testing just as an added precaution to ensure that their retention basin is functioning properly.
Yeah, and I believe that actually in the post-development stormwater plan, which this is a very large tome. So, yeah, I had to dig this one up. But there is a requirement that the basin needs to be inspected at least twice annually to make sure that the permeability is still okay. And if at any point the infiltration basin isn't draining as it's designed to within 72 hours, then they have to remediate.
Okay, good enough. Thank you. Any other comments or questions about this? Okay. All right then, we are ready to make a motion to approve or reject. So.
Um, I, I just want to make one more note, sorry. The, I have on the agenda motion, the two modifications, if approved, with the fee in lieu and the crosswalk or pedestrian crossing, what have you, to be approved by the town engineer. This, this would also be assuming the easement that's shown on here is included. And originally, when the planning commission took a look at this, now, of course, some of the modifications have changed, but they did mention safety fencing at the top of the hill at lots 101 and 102. So I was not sure whether council wanted to carry that forward with the 2 to 1 fill slope modification, or if sort of the new grading satisfied that, you know, it's up to you. But I did just want to mention it before you all made the motion.
If I, if I can interject about the fencing behind lot 101 and 102 is that most builders, they, they include when the lawton homes purchased a landscaping budget, if you will, that is allowed, you know, is designated for the landscaping around the house and around the perimeter. What we would like to do is, is increase that budget for those homes so the homeowner can choose how that buffer is done. That's, that's the way we would like to approach it, not have it so black and white of a fence or this and that, but, but allow some latitude for the homeowners to decide how they want.
Mike, what are the various options, you know, that are typically offered then for that?
Essentially, it would be a small split fence or, or just around, just like around the stormwater basin, some landscaping, whether it's trees, shrubs, a combination of the two. You know, some homeowners may want to keep it low and have a fence so they, you know, the view is not, is not changed. So they have a full view out of their backyard. Some may prefer this, you know, secluded of having landscaping and trees or a combination of the two. We just would like to have them to have that option.
I think that's a good idea. Was there anything else?
That was all that I had.
Okay. Okay, does someone want to make, make, make or not make this motion? Approve or reject? It's a lot to read, but we can do it. It's just 9:34.
Sorry, I tried to keep it as short as possible.
I need someone to make this motion or make it to either approve or reject it.
Well, first of all, do we have any, I mean, it's council's decision, of course, but do we want to, RJ has provided for the modifications and the other, the contingent items that were in her report, but her report doesn't include. So I'm assuming based on Mr. Sabina's conversation that we're satisfied, or I shouldn't assume, but that there's a relative satisfaction with the line of sight issue. But I think I did not, I didn't hear the developer commit to doing the safety fencing. I just heard that, but he wasn't 100% opposed, as he said. So do we want safety fencing or do we not want safety?
No, 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 no.
Oh, she's stuck. I think she might be stuck again.
I don't think she was answering Shelley's question.
I was going to say, it sounded like an answer. Oh dear, okay. To be clear, the original discussion around the safety fencing, that had just been a contingency recommendation for the modification request. So, you know, that's certainly up to council and the developer if you want to continue to discuss that. But I just didn't mention it in the report since those modifications had been withdrawn.
Right, I'm really asking council members if, because if I were proposing this, I would want that contingency in the motion to move forward. But that's just me.
Mike.
I thought Mike's response on the landscaping allowance on those two lots, that the resident or the homeowner can use it however they want. They could build a safety fence there for their family. And I did agree with his point that it appears that two of the spots on the retention basin would have landscaping there that would sort of act similar to a fence. So.
Mike, I'm talking on the particularly, specifically along the sidewalk on Broad Meadow.
At the bottom of the sidewalk.
I'm talking about the sidewalk where children will be riding bikes and walking.
You're thinking of the west, the west end of the pond?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so Shelley, you're talking about the west end kind of coming around that bend there.
And you live, and you know that. I, I could be completely wrong in my concern. You know it better than I have been there, but.
Yeah, there is a lot of child traffic, you know, walking, bikes, skateboarding, whatever, because that goes right down to the pool. You know, if, it would be good to know if the developer was, you know, up for either safety fencing or even landscaping type barrier, you know, similar to what's at the, around the other sides of it.
And I believe the reason that the landscaping was not carried through onto that side was because they were either at or below a differential of 12 feet, which is where the landscaping buffer requirement triggers in our grading ordinance.
Right.
And to Shelley's point, I have a question. Maybe the developer can answer this for me. It appears to me that from the sidewalk, it doesn't just go straight down into the basin. It actually goes uphill first. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. Ed, if you're still on, maybe you can, you can explain that a little better. But I believe it is up and then goes into the basin. So, so it wouldn't be at eye level. You wouldn't be just walking directly into it. You know, at that, at that point, I would most certainly agree that a fence would need to be there. But maybe, Ed, if he's still on.
Oh, he's even here. I'll unmute him. He must have muted himself. There you go.
I mean, if you're talking from the sidewalk that's in the new road of the development. Broad Meadow, yeah. RJ, do you have a, can you put that plan up again, please?
Sure. One second. There we go. So this side, if my mouse is still showing, this is where we're talking about.
So from the sidewalk, it slopes up towards the basin.
Is it accurate to say the light green is where it's sloping up?
That's correct. It slopes up from the sidewalk.
Are those two-foot contours, I believe?
Yes, those are two footers.
Yeah, so.
Do you know what the total difference in elevation is? Like how big of a hill that is?
At the very minimum, but where the entrance, for the maintenance entrance, it looks like it would be 2, 4, probably 5 feet up. And then it increases as you go down, leading to Fassinger, up to 1, 2.
So I guess, Shelley, to answer your question, I'm not so concerned personally with a fence there, especially because I think the reason it came up initially was because of the modification they were requesting from the 4 to 1 slope to 3 to 1. And, and so even if someone overcame the hill, now, when they go into the basin, it's not going to be as steep as it was supposed to be previously. Now, if the concern is that it's potentially going to be filled with water at some point and you want to make sure that a kid doesn't get into there, then that's a, I think that's a valid, you know, thing to discuss as well.
Kim's back, I think.
RJ, is a, is a fence required if we have a 4 to 1 interior slope?
It is not.
Okay. And the basin is designed to de-water within 72 hours completely.
But it does fill with water. For 72 hours, children could go play in it.
Children could climb fences too, probably.
Kim, have we got you back?
I am, you have my voice only.
There you are.
I'm trying to stay with you and, and, okay, all right. So what did we decide in my travels? Did we decide that we're happy with this or we, what do we, what did we decide?
Passing out a safety fence.
Oh, okay, okay. So we're thinking about a safety fence, okay.
Just, just really quickly, at the northwest corner of the basin there, from the sidewalk to where that starts sloping, how much of an uphill is there before it starts sloping back down? Because I'm just thinking of kids coming down on, on bikes or skateboards or something and, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, I think at the intersection of Broad Meadow and Brookview into our plan, right at the, right at the corner there, if that's what you're talking about, that's relatively at grade there, so it'll be pretty flat.
But to add to that, we are going to have entrance monuments there as well. So it will not be like some clear, you know.
Okay, so when you say entrance monuments, is that going to be like a, like a kind of a solid sign across? Or is it a couple pillars?
Undecided, but more toward a few pillars, something lighted. It will be very aesthetically pleasing and, to be honest, quite large.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you know, basically what I'm saying is something that, that just kind of blocks that corner as a clear path for, you know, for a kid on a bike to just accidentally veer out of control into the.
No, I totally understand what you're saying. And there will be something quite large there that would lock.
Prevent that.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Mike, in that corner, if you're going to have a monument of some type there, could it be designed in such a way to incorporate some additional fencing coming out, like on, as wings, just to get around that corner of the pond to, until the, the slope starts to increase there?
Sure, absolutely.
The attractive nuisance factor of that.
Absolutely. I think incorporating safety and aesthetics at the same time is something I most certainly try to do. In mind that there is the access point to the stormwater basin right there as well, which will, I believe it is gated by the ordinance. So we would have to incorporate that one way or another to, you know, to allow some safety. But, you know, we can make it a little longer to incorporate that.
I think it could be, the gate could be on one side and just regular fencing the other or something like that.
Sure, we can, we can design that. And if, if you want to put something in where that, that it has to be approved by the township or township engineer, that is totally.
And then just to make sure, at the corner coming around, you know, the bottom of Broad Meadow there, none of the work, none of the, and I can't imagine this is the case, I just want to be sure, none of the fill work or anything there is going to impact the existing lines of sight?
I think if anything, it'll actually increase it.
Okay. Yeah, because right now, you know, without anything there, it's a pretty clear line of sight. You know, and if there's, if there's some landscaping or something put there that's set back a little bit, that'll stay clear. I just wanted to make sure that the fill plan didn't, you know, like there wasn't going to be some mound that was put there that the lines of sight that we're looking at now aren't going to be there because of, because of that.
Sure, totally understand. And as, as the township engineer said, that on those fill slopes, he doesn't want any landscaping. And I just want to reiterate again that, you know, safety, functionality and aesthetics are all important for this and that everybody coming around the bend, you know, we want them to have the line of sight. Want this to be safe. We also want it to look real. So we're gonna, we're gonna do both and make sure that all of this works out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so is everyone satisfied? Have their questions and answers satisfied?
Yes.
Okay. All right, are we ready to take action on this?
Madam President, I'll, I'll make a motion that's going to take me three minutes to read. I will move to approve the preliminary and final subdivision land development application for the Fassinger Farms Plan of Lots submitted by Miranda Homes, Inc., located at 1280 Fassinger Lane, Lot and Block 610-8-128, as per project number 3852, prepared by Scheffler and Company, Inc., pages 1 to 29, dated March 6, 2020, with the latest revision being September 10, 2020. Contingent upon all items being addressed as identified in the Planning and Development Staff Report and Town Engineers Review Letter, both dated September 10, 2020. This plan is approved with the following modifications. Modification request number 1 to Section 1705.05A, standards for grading to allow the slopes for fill throughout the development to be 2 horizontal to 1 vertical or 2H to 1V, modified from 3 horizontal to 1 vertical or 3H to 1V. Modification request number 2 to Section 1371.03B, sidewalks, to waive the required sidewalk on the north side of Fassinger Lane, with the condition that the applicant pay a fee in lieu of $24,700 to be used towards the construction of pedestrian facilities elsewhere in the town.
Do we need to add a bit about the entrance sign?
The entrance sign is shown on the full engineering drawings.
Okay, but we talked about a modification of the entrance sign that would include wings, for lack of a better word, to kind of deter kids from entering at that low point. Does that need to be included in the motion?
Gavin.
If it's not on the plan, it needs to be included in the motion.
I think you would want to add a contingency that the design of the monument signage and associated fencing meet the approval of the town or the town engineer.
Okay, and a follow-up question. Do we need to make the same kind of contingency for the location of a crosswalk?
I believe that's already, I think, in the review letter, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have to read that whole thing again or can I just say?
I don't think you have to read it. I only have to read it again, I think you have to say the modification that would you add to add the.
The additional contingency.
Yeah, the, yeah, it's the condition stated by the town manager.
Okay. With the condition.
It's recorded somehow.
With the condition as stated by the town manager with respect to the monument sign at the entrance to the new development.
I'll second that motion.
Gavin, is that language, get it done, by the way?
That got it done just fine. Well, we may have to go back and watch this one, but the minutes will reflect it, I'm sure.
So that's David and Angela. Okay, are there any comments now? Good. All right. All those in favor of approving indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're still doing zonings. All right. So the next thing is a motion for our antenna system. Is there someone who, is there any questions or problems with this resolution? Can we go ahead and make a motion to adopt?
Wait, Madam President, just for, just for background, again, information, again, I think you made, made clear to, in, for previous statements, but again, the FCC regulates all this kind of stuff. It leaves it up to the town. The town has to put rules in place if they don't want it to be kind of the Wild West out there with respect to this stuff, right?
That's correct.
So just to, just to make clear, it's not, you know, we're not just like picking things out of midair to say, oh, let's make regulations regarding this. This is something that the FCC allows and if townships don't step in with any kind of, you know, guidance, then it's the Wild West with respect to it.
Right. And this specific to the fee, this resolution specific to the fee.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the particular change in this one is just regarding, we actually did have sort of the annual right-of-way fee incorporated into our fee schedule already from a previous update, but this portion is just reaffirming that we are able to charge the consultant fees for review, such as legal or the town engineer, that those would be escrowed and billed as in a normal land development. The full ordinance vote is coming up later under Old Business, I believe.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, in any case, my comment applies to both.
The comment is still accurate.
Still valid, yep.
Would you like to make the motion?
Sure. Are you guys sick of my voice yet? I will move to adopt Resolution Number 16 of the 2020 series, a resolution amending the town's master fee schedule, Resolution Number 29 of 2019, to provide a fee for distributed antenna system, DAS, and stealth technology.
Fresh second.
All right. Additional comments, questions at this time? Hearing none? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Public Safety Committee. Carolyn is excused absence this evening, so I believe Councilmember Woods is going to, to Public Safety.
Yes, Madam President, the chief's report was included in the packets. If anyone has any questions, Chief Hawke is on the line.
Folks, any questions for me?
I do have a com, I do have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
And my comment is that it makes me very happy, we always say that, that the police are here to serve and for the safety of the committee, the community, and Officer Wade and Chabberencheck really have above and beyond with their saving of, first aid administration and saving lives. So that's a hats off to our police officers who are trained to handle just anything that happens.
And you're absolutely right, ma'am. If I could just add to that for a moment, Officer Wade, as you folks have seen in your report, has probably saved two lives in over, just over the last year. This one, most recent one, it was a, as we typically are, we're out there on the road, so we usually beat the medics to their calls just because we're closer. And when he arrived, his training and experience, you know, indicated that he needed to take some serious action fast, and he applied a tourniquet. And I have to say, we just had this tourniquet training in probably the last, under the last year, and it was that these tourniquets were graciously provided by Allegheny Health Network. They provided training and then a tourniquet for each officer, and he utilized it, and like I said, probably saved this gentleman. And he, about a year ago, he saved a young lady who was, had choked into unconsciousness, and he was able to find and clear an obstruction. This is just a couple examples, you know, of what they're out there providing, the service they're providing for the town on a daily basis. Now, you know, fortunately, not every day they're doing something quite this extraordinary, but just an example, they're out there for you folks, and that's what they're trying to do. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Sergeant Chabberencheck, who fished a young lady that had escaped the hospital out of a retention pond, and when he arrived there, UPMC Police, not to take away from them, but they had surrounded the retention pond and done nothing else. So he immediately entered the waters, took the lady into custody and got her back to the hospital for necessary treatment. And when he come back to the station, a little anecdotal note here, he's telling me about this. Rescue. And he's standing in the hallway and usually well kept, he had a foul odor about him and leaking out of his, literally coming out of his pant leg and down his boot with some black water. So needless to say, before he could return to duty, he had to clean up and change his uniform, but just wanted to bring that to light. I like to put positives out there for you folks to see what the officers are doing out there on the street.
Very good. Thank you.
I did have one quick question, Chief. In the news lately, there's been traffic stops or altercations, it's gone awry in communities that usually involve, that have involved race. If someone in my neighborhood comes up to me and goes, hey, what does, what does our police do or how are they trained so this doesn't happen in our community? I mean, I would first say, you know, everyone I've met are really great, wonderful, professional men and women, but how would I answer that in a little better edutainment?
Certainly. I follow, and that's a great question, Mike. I would start with the base that you folks have established here in the town for hiring standards. They're such that officers cannot be hired, you know, cannot even fill an application out if they don't have, at the least, a four-year degree, or I believe their 60 college credits with a couple years full-time experience, or maybe even four years full-time experience. So my point is, they're already getting to the town, highly trained, well-educated, and experienced. So you guys have laid a good foundation for your police department, and that's where it starts. And from there, we train them in the McCandless way of doing things, which we believe is, you know, we try to set the bar and the standard as high as we possibly can for them. Every year, to kind of address training, Mike, for anybody who might ask, MOPACT, it's the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission through the state of Pennsylvania, is they, they require annual training of every municipal police officer in the state. There are new topics every year that are the, what I would consider current trends and current issues that need addressed. They are always on top of that with the training that the officers aren't, like I said, are mandated to receive. There's always a section on legal updates every year where they're, they're educating officers on new laws or changes to existing criminal laws. Topics that I know we have, we have already had training on, and we will certainly get quite a bit more of in the upcoming 2021. We know will be de-escalation, that's a big one. Racial bias will be another one that we already do receive training on, they have touched on that, you know, over the years in the training, but I'm sure they're going to hit those ones hard this upcoming year. On top of the mandatory training, we also send them, based on the budget, you know, and the officer's schedule, we send them to any training we possibly can through Allegheny County and other companies that offer it. So we do our best to train, and I know that I can offer you folks no absolute guarantee because, you know, tragic things could happen at any, any place at any time, but that's why we train, so that if something happens to that, you know, our officers are going to handle it to the best of their ability and hopefully a successful conclusion with no, no negative media attention. And all lives safe.
Good to hear. So we hire good people and train them up. Thank you.
Absolutely, Mike. That's the short of it.
Yep.
Are there any other questions? That concludes my report, Madam President.
Services Committee.
Oh, a bigger part, we missed the Public Works.
I'm sorry, you are correct. We did miss Public Works. Public Works?
Hello again. So the activity report for Public Works is in your packet, and Mr. Sabina is on the line if anyone has any questions. I just wanted to say I was grateful to see that we're getting some of the stormwater basins cleaned up. I know that was part of our, part of what we wanted to get done this year, so I'm glad to see that it's underway. Thank you.
Now Services.
The Fire Marshal's report for the month of July 2020 and Permanent Report for August 2020, as well as the Code Enforcement Violation Complaints, a specific report for the month of August 2020, Warrant Counsel's packet, and Fire Marshal's staff is also on the line if anyone has any questions or comments. Hearing none, that completes my report.
Recreation Committee.
Bob, if you would like to share the fitness court update, please.
As Council President indicated at the beginning of the meeting, we did hold a soft opening on Saturday for the fitness court. We were able to livestream that on Facebook, and as of this morning, we had had about 1,700 views of that video. So it was well received. I think everybody felt that it was a good event. We accomplished what we wanted to and we hope to have a lot of use of that as we move forward. All went well.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. The virtual bingo did go on, on August 27th, and there's a summary of the event in your packet if you have any questions. We haven't had much time to talk with the AAC, but we are hoping to do more events like it in the very near future.
Excuse me. Are you, I'm sorry, are you?
Yes, that's all.
I apologize. Madam President?
Yes?
Did I, did I take a break or did we move past the ordinance adoption under Public Safety for the student resource officers?
We had removed, we had removed that because the school district had not.
Okay, I'm working from an old agenda. I apologize.
No problem, no problem. Things move quickly around here, it's tough to keep up.
I apologize to all.
No problem, no problem. Okay. Are we through with Recreation Committee?
Yes, that concludes the report. Thank you.
Okay. Old Business, does anyone want, want to give a short summary of this or we ready, or we have any more questions about it, we ready to move forward on this?
This is a long-incoming ordinance, similar to the keeping of household pets, maybe neck and neck to see which one was older, I don't know. But in any case, the original intent of this ordinance was to bring us into compliance with the most recent FCC regulations impacting these, these types of facilities, and we've expanded that to include items regarding stealth technology and other aesthetic considerations. So this, again, was long-incoming, a lot of discussion that took place at the planning commission level, people did a lot of hard work, a lot of research in order to be able to get this right, or get it as right as we possibly could get it. And as a result, I think we now have a, a good document in front of us, held the public hearing two, three weeks ago, actually, with very little, if any, comment, if I remember right. And, you know, just open it up, any last minute questions you folks may have.
Are there any questions? All right, is someone ready to make a motion?
I'll move, I'll make the motion. This is Shelley. I move to approve ordinance number 1505 and ordinance to amend, amending the distributed antenna system, DAS, and stealth technology to add definitions for minimal functional height, small wireless communications facilities, and micro wireless communications facilities to amend and add provisions regarding retention of experts and to establish conditions for small wireless communication facilities, including regulations to time of review, fees, design, siting, and development.
All right, that was the motion. Unmute me, I'm back.
All right. Let me get you, find you in here.
I'm down, but I'm down but never out. All right. That, that, that falls on. All right. So let me unmute here. Let me mute the phone.
Oh, good.
I was quicker.
Good, perfect. Oh, all right, good. All right, so there's been a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so Mike made the second. All right, Shelley and Mike. All right, any comments? Again, last call.
One quick comment, I think Shelley may have.
Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold on.
Aye.
Oh, no.
Is Kim out again? Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Well, while Kim hooks back up. Kim, are you back? While Kim hooks back up, I think Shelley might have said 1505, and at least my copy of the agenda says 1504. Ordinance number 1504.
To be 04.
Oh, because, because the copy had the school resource thing on it.
Yeah. Yeah. Right. I have the agenda that I got first. So Gavin, can I just state a modifier? How do you want me to handle that?
I think, we can let, we can let the record reflect that it's 1504.
I just can't hear you. I don't know what to do here.
Oh, boy.
Can we leave Shelley, can we leave Shelley now?
I'm calling in, I'm just giving up. I've called back in, I'm sorry. I really apologize. I've had trouble with my Comcast this week, I've been on the phone with everybody, so I apologize.
Kim, if you...
Kim, if you, if you leave the phone on and your camera, like, we can still see you, I'll just unmute only your phone. That might work.
Good idea.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, all right, it's just the best I can do. Okay, where were we? And I apologize so much. So did everybody vote on that? Did we all say yes?
Not a lot.
I don't, I don't think we voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
All right, so Shelley made the motion, Mike made the second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have a wireless communication ordinance, that's awesome. Okay, so, Old Business on the, I need a nomination. We had a lot of good people, I need a nomination for the member for the Northland Library.
Madam President, how are we going to, there's always been that discussion about how to handle, like, elections, is it whoever speaks up first and we vote on it, or are we taking motions and then we're going to vote on the nominees?
I mean.
Go ahead, go ahead, Gavin, because you, I feel like I get different answers every time we ask this.
Well, I, I try to, I've tried to be consistent with it, and, and I think the answer is, if you, I mean, the easiest way is to someone make a motion, and then it gets voted up or down. You know, so that's, that's the most straightforward way, and that's the way I'd recommend.
Okay, okay. Is that good enough, Shelley?
Yeah, I have a motion.
Okay, all right, Shelley, you raise your hand first.
Based on her extensive experience as a North Allegheny Librarian, as well as her many years of service in Northland Public, Northland Library Foundation Board, I would like to move to appoint Rita Martin as a member of the Northland Public Library Authority with a term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Is there a second?
I would like a second.
All right, Trish?
Based on, and I'd like to add to that, and I would include, based on the fact that the attention and experience in the fundraising, the financial aspects of the operation of Northland Library is critical, while I appreciate there are so many resources that the, the other candidates gave us, I, I think we need to pay attention to the financials.
Agreed.
Well said. If there are no other comments, all those in favor of appointing Rita Martin to the Northland.
Oh, Madam President, I was, I was going to, to jump in quick and, and say, this was a, I mean, I think this is going to be a really hard decision. I was also going to put forward another name, you know, but I was also going to encourage discussion among, you know, among council members as to the best fit. I, like I said, there were a lot of good candidates, I was inclined towards, to nominate Dana Getz, so I don't know if other people want to have a further discussion, or if people feel they have enough information now, I just wanted to encourage it if people did want to have a further discussion.
Madam President, how does this work? Because I would agree with Councilman Smith that that's who I would probably have nominated.
Then you, what you, the way this works is, there's been a not, a motion, there's a motion on the table that will need to be voted on, so we have a motion, we have a second, so if you want, if you prefer a different candidate, then you would vote against this one, and if it fails, then you, then the motion would fail, and then you, I would call for another nomination, and then you could make that nomination, that's how this works.
I commented that I thought they were all incredible candidates, and I'm not, it's sort of like, you're picking your favorite child, it's like, I can't do this, but you got to pick one.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Okay, okay. All right. Yes.
Sorry, question about the, for tonight, we have six of us, so the motion fails with, with.
Three, three fails.
Three, three fails.
It has to have a majority, so three, three is a fail, exactly.
And just to be clear, that even if someone voted for a candidate the first time, after the motion fails, you're free to vote in the affirmative for the next person.
Yes, correct, yes.
It's a whole, it's a whole new motion, it's a whole new motion, yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other questions about the kind of procedural of how this is going? Okay, all right, um, all right, so we're ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of appointing Rita Martin, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so it's a roll, so what we do now is we have a roll called Vote, and Bob usually does those, and he goes down the line, starts with Ward Two, and then everybody says how they want to vote, and then he does the math.
Ward Two?
Aye.
Ward Three?
Nay.
Ward Four?
Nay.
Ward Five?
Nay.
Ward Seven?
Aye.
Ward One?
Aye. So it's three, three?
Yes.
The motion fails. We're taking nominations, a second nomination?
Madam President, I would move to appoint Dana Getz as a member of the Northland Public Library Authority with a term set to expire December 31st, 2022.
Is there a second? Mike, you seconded? Okay. All right. Any comments about this? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Dana is our, our new appointment to the Northland Public Library. I'd like to announce, or make a notification, that a public hearing has been rescheduled to be held on September 28th of 2020, on an ordinance establishing regulations pertaining to the keeping of chickens. A vote on this ordinance is scheduled at the meeting of Town Council on October 12th of 2020. So under New Business, this is the maintenance bond that the engineers have looked at and agreed that we can give back to Sheetz, as recommended by our town engineer. Are there any questions before we move on with this? This is kind of housekeeping stuff.
Just a clarification, Madam President, we're not giving back this bond, this is a bond that Sheetz will take, or that we will have in place for two years, we'll hold a separate vote to eliminate the performance one, correct, Gavin?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so it kind of comes out of this bond into another bond, so I guess they don't get to get it back.
Sort of from the other into this.
Yeah, okay. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move, so moved.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we need, I need a motion, unless there's any, is there any other business? We've got to put that on the, we've got to put that on the agenda, Bob, so I can remember it. Okay, no other business? All right, then, can I have a motion to reconvene?
Madam President, I move to reconvene this meeting at 6:30 PM on September 24th, 2020, to conduct interviews to fill positions on the Planning Commission and the Zoning Hearing Board.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, that's Shelley. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Quick, quick question on that, should the Activities Committee one have been in that
It would be, there would be a Plan, Activities.
That's right, because we had one more person on there, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I don't think we have to move to go into executive session because we're out of a meeting, right?
That's absolutely correct.
Did I finally get that right?
I, I better, hang on, wait, should I stop the recording now?
You nailed it, yes, you could stop it.
You could have stopped it about a second ago, actually. We're going to go into, wait a second.
Just snippet.
Don't stop it yet, don't stop it yet. We're going to go into executive, Town Council is going to go into executive session now to discuss a property transaction, possibly. No, we're for sure going to discuss it, but it's a possible transaction. Okay, now we're done.
Okay, Bob, I have given you the co-host powers, and I am signing off for the night.
Thank you for your help.